We're going to start this meeting at 6:30 PM on October 17. Councilmember Lau, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You can stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, Sheehan Tom. Hi, Lori. Roll call, Mr. Goff.
Yes, Councilmember Cash.
Present, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Mayor Paul Timm Frosty.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
We have presentations tonight. Presentation of the City of Laverne's draft Housing Element Update by Amanda Tropiano. Mr. Shear, Director Shear.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to briefly introduce Amanda Tropiano from the DeNovo Planning Group. The city hired DeNovo to start our general plan update and subsequently also entered contact with your housing elements. Amanda is here to give a brief overview of where we're at on the housing element. Amanda, wherever you are.
She's hiding. Good evening.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. As Eric had introduced, I'm Amanda Tropiano, a principal with DeNovo Planning Group. I've had the privilege of working with Laverne for the past several years on your general plan update and most recently focused on your housing element, which I know you've had the pleasure of getting to learn more about over the past year or so. Tonight, I'm here to provide you a presentation. There's no action being taken or recommendations. Wanted to give you an update as to where we're at in the process and share the progress that the city has made over the past few months and then provide you the opportunity to just think about some of these big issues and allow you the chance to ask questions of staff or of myself subsequent to tonight's meeting in advance of any future public hearings. So with that, you can go ahead and move on to the next slide. So as I had mentioned, the city has been working on a comprehensive update to its general plan since 2017. During this time, the city was planning proactively to address the requirements of the upcoming Housing Element Update cycle. In 2019, the city received its Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or its RENA, which made us kind of focus on the challenges associated with getting a certified housing element and allowed that to kind of make sure that we're on the right path for the general plan update. So for the past 18 months or so, we've really been focused on working on the housing element, in particular identifying sites appropriate to accommodate your RENA. Again, that RENA, as you remember, I briefed you this time last year. It's a little bit higher than we were expecting and we were thinking strategically about how to make sure Laverne is in a successful position to get a certified housing element. So we're at the end of the process. I've got a really exciting set of updates to share tonight and we are winding down your housing element update and looking forward to relaunching kind of your general plan work. So, next slide. So just as a reminder, I'm going to share just the timeline of events because there's a lot of key components that have happened over the past 18 months. In early December, we released a draft of the Housing Element Update for public review and also submitted that draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for the state's review and feedback on that draft. We received public comments and we received comments from the state to which we have spent time responding to and updating, sharing progress updates with the public and soliciting feedback from your residents and stakeholders on those revisions. In August of this year, the city resubmitted the final set of revisions to the Department of Housing and Community Development for consideration. They took their state-required 60 days to review and provide comments and I'm going to cut to the chase here. I'm happy to report that the housing element that we presented and circulated for public review has found to be in compliance with all components of state housing law and the state is ready to certify it upon the public review and adoption schedule with your planning commission and with the city council. Next slide. I want to emphasize the great work that Laverne has done to prepare for this. Of the 196 jurisdictions in the Southern California Association of Governments region, only 42 were in compliance at the end of last week, so just about 20%. And there are some cities that are facing some really serious challenges but Laverne is not one of them. So I'm here to assure you that you're in a wonderful position. The hard work that you've done to prepare for this moment is paying off and you can see here that Laverne is going to be in a wonderful position to receive that certification. Next slide. All right, so a little bit about the housing element to help guide your review of it and the public's review. Next slide. The housing element, if you remember, is a required component of your general plan. Every city and county in California has to have a general plan and the housing element is one of those chapters. It should come as no surprise that it addresses the needs specific to housing, both of your current and future residents, and it is required to be updated periodically. Unlike other elements of your general plan, there is a state-mandated schedule for updates to your housing element. It's every eight years, we call it a cycle. We're in the sixth cycle in our eight-year period is 2021 to 2029. Next slide. So the housing element must accomplish four tasks. It must ensure that there's adequate land zoned appropriately to accommodate your future housing needs. It needs to facilitate the development of affordable housing by affordable housing developers. It needs to mitigate government constraints on the development of housing and promote equal access to all housing opportunities providing fair housing. Next slide. So one of the key components of the housing element is the city's strategy to meet what we call your fair share or your regional allocation of housing growth. The fair share or your allocation is determined in kind of a pyramid concept from the state all the way down to the local level, where the state determines how many housing units need to be developed over the planning period over those eight years. A portion of that statewide growth is assigned to your local region, so for Laverne, that would be SCAG. And then SCAG works to assign a portion of that regional growth to each individual agency. That methodology is reviewed and approved by the state and this was what helped guide that regional housing needs allocation for Laverne. Next slide. So the RENA is, not all units are created equal. The city also has to think about strategies to accommodate different household incomes. So working members, every community teacher, firefighter, all the way up to business owners, property owners. There are needs for new housing opportunities for all income categories. So that's kind of an extra facet associated with your RENA. Next slide. So the required RENA for this cycle, as you can see on the screen, is just over 1,340 units. Again, I want to emphasize, and I'll talk about this in a moment, the city of Laverne itself is not obligated to build housing. You are not a housing developer. It is the requirement for local agencies to demonstrate that there's land with the right zoning and planning a place for the private market to build housing if it so chooses. So the city of Laverne is not obligated to build this housing, but it is required to demonstrate that there is land available for it to be built. Next slide. We can move on to the next slide. So again, as I mentioned, Laverne itself doesn't build housing. The private market builds housing, both market rate and affordable. Laverne's role is to set the stage for those developers to propose projects that will be reviewed both by your staff, your planning commission, and your city council as they are proposed. Next slide. And housing comes in all different shapes and sizes. If you think about all the different types of housing that you've probably lived in in your life, the same type of house that you wanted to live in as a young adult versus raising a family or into a retirement, those all have different needs and residents want different things at different points in their life. So it's important to provide a range of housing options that can meet the needs of all of Laverne's community. Next slide. Some examples that we talked about in the housing element are the role of ADUs or accessory dwelling units, things like duplexes and then of course your single-family homes, multifamily homes, and then mixed-use development, where both residential and non-residential uses can exist. Next slide. And we are also talking about, again, the affordability of those units. With good quality design standards and thoughtful review and collaboration with developers, market rate and affordable projects can look very similar. Next slide. All right, we can move on. So I'm going to just talk about kind of the nuts and bolts of the actual housing element now. So your housing element is essentially broken into two pieces. I'm going to call them part one and part two. So part one is the first 50 pages or so of the housing element. That's your housing plan. That includes your goals, policies, and programs along with quantified objectives that help really guide decision-making related to the housing needs of your current and future residents for that eight-year planning period. The second part, part two, is your background report. That's all of the research, analysis, justification, findings that goes into helping inform the development of those goals, policies, and programs. And that's about 200 pages or so. Next slide. So the city has five goals that guide your decision-making on housing. The first is that the city strives to preserve and improve your existing housing stock in your existing neighborhoods. The second is providing a community with a variety of housing options for all different economic segments and backgrounds. The third goal is to minimize constraints related to the maintenance improvement and development of housing. The fourth is to provide a community with a diverse range of housing opportunities that really meet the diverse physical, social, and economic needs of your residents. And then the fifth is the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing or provide equal housing opportunities for all residents. Next slide. So the housing plan includes 29 programs that direct staff, mostly, on how to implement the housing plan over the next eight years. They are organized into the five topic areas outlined as part of your goals. 24 of those programs were already in your old housing element. So your current housing element, those for the prior eight years, did a great job of meeting most of those programmatic requirements. They've been modified, revamped to help kind of bring you into the next eight years, but they were really good and provided kind of a foundation for that housing plan. And then five new programs were introduced. Those are outlined on the screen and those include largely programs related to new pieces of state legislation that have gone into effect since the prior element was adopted by the SCAG. So these are things like replacing the process to replace affordable units should they continue, how the city will monitor the provision of new housing units in the city in accordance with those income requirements, the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing, and also highlighting the opportunity the city has to create consistency between your general plan, your housing element, and your zip income. Next slide. So that background report, again, just to clarify, includes a lot of that research and analysis. This is where most of those revisions in response to HCD's findings occurred. They will really focus on providing more information, more background research to justify those goals, policies, and programs. So we include updated information on demographics, constraints, and housing needs. We define the city's inventory of available sites to meet your RENA and provide an analysis of fair housing. Next slide. So specifically talking about the RENA strategy, this was of importance to the council when I was here before you last year. We can look at two kind of buckets of opportunities to accommodate your RENA. The first is progress that the city is already making. So projects that are already under development, that are already entitled. You can look to those and demonstrate that those are available and helping to contribute to meet some of your RENA requirement. The remaining RENA is really where we come up with a strategy to demonstrate that there is that sufficient land at the appropriate zoning to accommodate that remaining RENA. So that strategy here in Laverne takes kind of a three-pronged approach. The first is proposed projects. So maybe they're not approved or entitled yet, but they'll be before the planning commission or the city council during that eight-year period. We can look to those as an opportunity to accommodate a portion of the RENA. We can also look to the potential for development of accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units based on the past progress the city has made. So just kind of status quo, business as usual, moving forward. What might the city expect to see in terms of ADUs or J-ADUs? And then the third is the identification of additional sites that may develop with residential uses during the planning period. The city has sufficient sites and as I had mentioned, HCD has concurred that the city has sufficient sites appropriately zoned. No rezoning, no upzoning is required in order to accommodate your RENA. So you already have sites at the appropriate zoning density levels. To meet that need, no rezoning is required. Next slide. This is really a snapshot of just a table in the element. I encourage you to review that in detail as part of the fifth section of the background report. It clearly articulates the overall RENA that the city was assigned, the credits available through projects that have been approved or entitled, and then those that can be used as credits to accommodate that remaining RENA in each of those strategies I've demonstrated. Next slide. The sites available to accommodate the city's remaining RENA are focused in the Laverne Old Town specific plan area. This is obviously where the most energy, excitement, and interest to accommodate new growth in the city goes, adjacent to new transit facilities, the university, Old Town, and just really creating a really dynamic, special place here. This is the location that the city has already identified through adoption of its Old Town Laverne specific plan as the location to accommodate this type of development and we were able to highlight those opportunities here in the housing element as the appropriate locations to accommodate your RENA. Next slide. All right, so where does that bring us? Of course, tonight, I'm here again just for our presentation, providing you an update, overview, and status of where we're at. No action is being taken by the council tonight. We'll be in front of the planning commission and yourselves again at a series of subsequent public hearings. Tentatively, we're scheduled to be in front of the planning commission on November 2nd and should they make a recommendation to yourselves in front of you on November 2nd first. We will return the housing element once it is adopted to the state for final review and certification. And again, I would clarify as part of that that this element being returned to them is consistent with the element they've already reviewed and approved. So that process, we have a lot of confidence in that process that that review would go expeditiously and they would be able to return a certification to Laverne in fairly short order. Any modifications to the draft that is presented to you tonight or in front of you for the public hearings kind of opens up the opportunity for HCD to continue reviewing and commenting. So the revisions presented to you, the draft in front of you, we have confidence that that meets the requirements of state housing law and would be certified by the state. Should you wish to make any modifications to that, we would like the opportunity to work with the state reviewers to make sure that those modifications are acceptable and we'll jeopardize any subsequent certification of the element. Next slide. So that brings me back to the general plan update. So now that we have some high confidence that the sites available to accommodate your RENA satisfy those state requirements and the state is the one requiring a rezoning or upzoning, we can start to pivot back to the general plan. We had the pleasure of working with the General Plan Advisory Committee to largely draft the policy document back in 2019. So we've got all of the goals, policies, and actions kind of sitting there waiting to be used. Obviously, they'll need some minor modifications and modernization since that time. But being able to move forward with preparing the public review draft of that document, ultimately conducting the environmental review and then bringing all of those projects back together in front of you for the series of public hearings. All right, so that's it for my presentation tonight. Again, no action. Just wanted to make sure that you were up to date as to where we're at, show you good news about the state's review of the revisions we're setting so far and make sure that you have the opportunity to review it before your public hearings, ask any questions of staff or myself that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Tropiano. Anybody in council have any questions for Ms. Tropiano? I'm going to go ahead and thank you very much and if some other questions, we'll bring them back up. Even though this is just a presentation, we're not making any decisions on this tonight. I'd like to open the floor if anybody has any comments or on the side. So we're going to open up public comment right now. And if you could please state your name, your address, or you have a card already. Thank you. Ms. Campbelldon, good evening.
Cynthia, Cynthia Gabbeldon, 212 Amherst. So I also have a copy for everybody and there's also a fact sheet that I think this council and everybody in here needs to know about. One of the first questions that actually comes to mind about all this is would the city be doing this if it wasn't forced to do so? And you really need to think about that. The second question is, has there been any effort to push for lower RENA numbers as so many other cities out there are doing this right now? She actually brought up a graphic that had a list of cities that were not actually in compliance. And the reason why is down here in Southern California, a lot of cities are saying no and are pushing back. And we're going to get into that. The six-cycle RENA triggered SCAG to actually go through and start a RENA reform process. Several issues have been raised by stakeholders related to the regional determination methodology, the use of land planning factors and the SCAG RENA methodology as the basis for the RENA appeals. Comments were due on August 12th. Did the city submit any comments? Is the city even active in this project? And this is for SCAG, which we have members that are part of that. In October 2021, the California State Joint Audit Committee approved an emergency audit to examine the HCD's regional determination process. And I have the fact sheet concerning that. That's okay, I'll get it. The actual audit was based on the assertion that held up the limited information on the actual formula that HCD uses to calculate their regional determination numbers and cited a lot of confusion and mistrusts amongst the regional planning bodies and jurisdictions and the need for an independent and objective process review. And in the letter, you'll have, I actually have the link of the whole audit report. It's a very, very thorough document. Two things have come out of it, though. There were major map errors. There's no other way to say it. They were found that they did not have enough 2AQC on the map. They double-counted numbers. And the audit report's very, very clear about that. HCD also could not demonstrate any kind of consistency in work group recommendations going over a list of factors. And those were actually all actually required by the state statute and they didn't even include them. Hence, there's a couple of key facts. The state-mandated RENA allocations do not take into consideration any of the need for additional services, water, schools, fire, police, parks, to actually support any of these housing units. And everybody really needs to understand that when it comes down to going forward with zoning and also with general plan. In LA County, and it's documented now because they're figuring out what to do, LA County's overcount was over 200,000. So your, our number is part of that 200,000. It's well documented. Also, the actual SCAG numbers that were used were to have major faults in it. She actually referenced something called the fair share statement that that's what that's actually linked to. So those, the actual SCAG projections that they use, also when they carry through the map errors that were from the state, but they also have their own map errors. Why is nobody questioning this? I just don't understand. This comes to the essence of our city and I don't understand. And I keep looking in the documents. I don't ever see a letter from the city included in any of the public information. So this actually leads me to a question. Does anyone on staff or on council know that the city's overcrowding, and that's their word, and cost burden numbers are in the sixth-cycle RENA calculations? These two factors alone are causing an overcalculation of 300% statewide. For example, and I'm going to be using SCAG's numbers in this, we probably all think that when they did these calculations it was purely based off of vacancy need. That is not what it's about. And the whole day's that is what it was about. That's not what it's about anymore, though. And I was actually surprised by that myself. So using SCAG's own example, and this is for LA County, where the county-wide vacancy is stated at 178,869, the overcrowding factor that nobody can explain what that is is 459,917. It's significantly higher. And then the cost burden number is 117,505. These two factors alone add up to 557,422. Just to give you a feel, that's just those two factors in our current math. And the total fifth-cycle RENA number for all of LA County under SCAG, our total was 490,60. So just these two numbers add up to what the entire county's total was previously. Where did they get these numbers? And why hasn't the city council and staff not questioned these? And to give you guys just even a bigger picture, fifth cycle, like I said, was 409,60. Originally, our entire number ended up adding to 1.341 million. And over 557,000 of that were these two ghost numbers that, they're trying to prove how they backcounted. Now that's what this old RENA SCAG process is now. Do we really know how much housing is actually needed? What is our true vacancy need? What really is that and shouldn't that be our ultimate goal? The city has actually been provided the information and opportunity to actually participate in a key task force to analyze data, share technical and legal resources, and also to participate in a proactive legal actions. The key goal of these groups is for cities to actually preserve local control and we should all want that as residents. In March, the city legal council actually confused the statewide livable California petition, which has been stopped at this time, with the grand, long Mendoza tripartisan land use initiative resolution. The city council can and should take up this land use initiative resolution. The city needs to stand up for pro-city autonomy, housing needs, and zoning rights. We should not be deferring to the state for our local land use laws and any of those decisions. This is the most pro-property ownership and pro-city autonomy resolution that can be actually voted on at this time. Over 80 cities in California have already voted on it and I've got links for it in here. Taking up the housing element without considering these factors and at a minimum including a statement on the RENA audit is not representing the true mission statement of the city of Laverne or its residents. These housing elements have been used as a baseline conditions for changes to our general plans and zoning plans. Everybody's got to realize what these numbers mean. These housing elements must be taken very seriously and you must be certain that the numbers are correct. That's, you guys are voting on this. It's got two seconds and two cents of them.
Okay, thank you.
The words and numbers used in the document do not reflect the city's mission statement and I've read that 100 times. The long-term consequences of this document are currently stated will be detrimental to the city of Laverne and do not let HCD threats keep you from questioning. Please question. It is your job as an elected official to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else like to speak on this? Ms. Bocham.
Good evening, mayor and council. Denisee Bocham, 2516 Amherst Street. What Ms. Gabbeldon just spoke of is probably the most important of what needs to be addressed by the city and staff, but there are other issues as well. There are many and almost too many to count errors in all of these reports that have been presented. So how do we know that these small errors over time So how do we know that these small errors over time, accumulatively, are not giving us the wrong base for the RENA numbers to begin with? And just in the PowerPoint presentation, that was, it says quantified objectives, but if there's errors, how are they quantifiable? They cannot be. I'll give you a prime example. In Figure 3.2, it references the city of Lawndale. To me, that says that this has been a copy and paste and we just put city of Laverne and we skipped one. How do we know that these numbers are truly based on the city of Laverne and not for city of Lawndale? Number one. Number two, as you all are well aware, I'm very involved with that Amherst project. And it quotes that Amherst project is a low density project, which is not the case. The zoning was changed for that project to medium density, which was a maximum of eight units rather than the three, which was the original zoning plan. Other issues that have also been brought up in the past, the planning, page 12, number eight, monitor the city of mobile home parks. Shouldn't the city make a direct statement that no rezoning of the mobile home parks is an option? Anything less will leave the door open to redevelopment. There is a redevelopment along Foothill Boulevard included in the statement, but what is this planned development? Why are there no details as to what that could possibly be? Housing Plan, page 13, number 10, partnerships with housing organizations and service providers and faith-based groups. Considering the redevelopment of church properties will be the demise of religious institutions. Stop and think about that for a minute. How many churches do we have in our city? It could be a quarter of that. If the city goes forward with allowing properties to be sold out from under the churches and these projects go in, how is this an approach to pro-family, pro-faith, and pro-neighborhoods? Isn't this a form of discriminatory practices against faith-based owned properties? Multifamily development standards, the city will be reducing the development height, block coverage, and parking requirements, which is very anti-neighborhood. We are all well aware of SB 9 and 10 and the effects it will have on traffic as it is not required for traffic studies to be performed prior to those constructions. The accessory dwelling units, as I just spoke of, these will directly impact. And at the SB 9 meeting, it was specifically stated that it wouldn't be much of an issue as the permit requests have been not too many. Yet, in this section of the housing plan, page 18, number 16, it specifically says that the goal is 92 units. So how do we go from not having that many permits requested to now all of a sudden we want to build almost 100 of them? This is the direct double talk that the residents are just really kind of sick and tired of and we need answers to these types of things. And the highest area of opportunity found in North Laverne is nowhere else but then the Sierra Laverne Golf Course, which, I mean, the residents up there should be concerned because that's prime real estate up there. Housing Plan, page 19, number 18, lot consolidation. This section should be reviewed and compared to the city's mission statement as Ms. Gallowdon just stated, it's incongruent to that statement. Does the city need to address the mission statement and maybe change it because they're not following what the mission statement is? I mean, we all live in Laverne for that small town feel and we all know our neighbors and we care about one another and help one another when the time calls for it, but yet we're in such a rush to build that we're going to become a metropolis. Look at that 647 unit that's on Gary and Benita, right on our border. I think these are serious issues that the city needs to address before they even have a study session and make sure that the numbers are correct because without correct numbers, this is all for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Mr. Gallowdon.
Good evening. There's probably not a lot that hasn't been said already about the quality of the numbers that are being used to derive the results of this plan. But I think that looking at this council in the eye and saying, you guys hold this city's future in your hands with whatever decision and whatever report you approve, is that this is not a report that might impact us tomorrow, but the results will impact us in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. And when I look at a report that says that we have the capacity to meet the state's numbers that are already, per the state auditors, define as flawed with major flaws in not only the process of the outcome, is that why are we selling out for the capacity of what we have in land today for what is the price we're going to pay tomorrow? Because when we use all the capacity, the developer comes in here, we enable them, we come in and build those 1,343 units, where else will they go? So can Ms. Bocham's comment about the Sierra Laverne Golf Course, north of Golden Hills, where property is available to develop, is that where we're going from here? Is it going to be that everything's going to be three stories high, higher than that? So I urge you that you consider what the city is, what it looks like, how it's built, and that you consider that while we won't look on for what it is and we want to grow and be welcoming to everybody in the community that wants to be here, we'd like to keep some of the Laverne we have intact and not sell or sell it out to developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak on this item? Mr. Allison.
You know, I'm really here more to understand the project. Councilmember Johnson, with a majority of this being poured down into your district, if you have any thoughts, what are your thoughts on this based on your longstanding history and involvement in the city? Does that make sense?
Thank you. We want to wait on that close public comment. Mr. Johnson. Anyone else who should speak on this item? And we'll bring it back up to the dais.
I know Ms. Krantz wanted to speak.
Oh.
She's the attorney representing on that project.
Oh.
She ordered it, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I just want to say two quick things. One, I want to remind you, for Laverne, you're incredibly lucky unlike other cities that are happy to do major rezonings and operate zones. You're not changing any existing development patterns. There's no big change in dynamics or zoning required from what currently exists. So the development that's allowed before the housing element will be the same as the development that's allowed after the housing element. Second, I want to point out that until you have a housing element that HCD has certified as being in compliance with state law, anybody can come in and file a project that has an affordable housing component anywhere in the city regardless of the zoning. And you can't deny it absent very specific findings. 12,000 units were just approved in Santa Monica because the city, because developers have filed applications under what's called the builder's remedy when Santa Monica didn't have their housing elements certified. They, and they then got a certified housing element, Santa Monica said, sorry, now it doesn't apply. HCD said, oh, yes, it does. It was based on when you filed the application. They now lose the right to deal with those 12,000 units. So we don't want Laverne to be in that situation. That's why it's critical in addition to the violations that HCD can come after year of funding, we can lose grant opportunities for Laverne to get their housing element certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. With that, no one else speaking on this item? We'll be back to the dais. I think we're on a table that any questions to our council? I think our expert over there has got the information and will report back on that. Any other questions for Amanda? Trupiana or Seth? Then, Val and we've got the information, Seth's got the information. We are going to move to announcements of upcoming community events. Who wish to speak on upcoming events? Please come on up. Motika and Trem, come on up.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, Mayor Trem and his councilmembers. It's a really big honor for us to be able to come and talk to everybody. You've been going actually from city to city. I represent, and along with me, my Chandra Keshwar. We represent the sovereign nation of Sri Kailasa. It's the only Hindu nation in the world today. And we are the representatives from the de facto embassy for this nation here in Montclair. We are a Hindu temple that serves everybody. The roots are in Hinduism, but we believe in interfaith and what we have to offer in terms of human empowerment goes beyond religion. It belongs to humanity. That's the way we look at it. And we are celebrating the festival of Diwali, which is the festival of light. We light lamps everywhere as a symbolic gesture of bringing light into people's life and eliminating the aspect of darkness, which is negativism, hatred, and various things that settle in. So we believe and the activities we do in the form of yoga, meditation, spiritual counseling, and the services at the temple are geared to people, to empower people to understand that they are the source of everything that can happen for them and for others. So we wanted to take this opportunity to invite the city council to come visit us and be part of our celebration. At the same time, we'd love to get a proclamation. Our guru is the sovereign head of the nation. He is Paramhamsan Ityananda, and he is an enlightened master from India and similar to the Dalai Lama, if I can say so. And his only goal is empowerment and enlightenment of humanity. And that is what we believe in. And we have seen, and actually members of the public from the city of Laverne do visit the temple and have benefited immensely. We've been here for about 15 years now. We're celebrating our 15th anniversary on the 24th of October. And it's a very, very big achievement for us as we take this forward to the rest of the communities around our temple. So I just wanted to share this and hope that we see more that we can offer to the city of Laverne and the residents and empower people. What can we do to help people understand that life is the best, life is the most auspicious, and how they can succeed in what they believe is their goals in life? And we wanted to offer that to the city of Laverne and to all the residents. And we have people from across the globe that come, visit the temple, that are part of our members who come and visit and take advantage of the resources that we have. And so we welcome everybody from Laverne also to come and be a part of it. So that is what we're here for and we're so happy to be a part of Laverne. I used to rent here in Laverne a few years ago, so, and I love the city. I mean, it's so beautiful, actually. And I'm so happy that I'm here to present to the council and thank you so much for the opportunity. Is there any question I can answer or?
I think we're good, but thank you, Motika, appreciate it. And Trem.
I just want to add to that. Thank you for having us here. And our anniversary is coming up and also Diwali is on the 24th of this coming Sunday.
Thank you so much.
So hopefully to see you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're actually lighting the lamps around seven o'clock in the evening. And that is very symbolic, as I had shared, and that brings lots of togetherness and oneness in the community and that's what we're here to share.
Thank you so much, both of you.
So we welcome everybody to come join us.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Definitely.
And we'll get this to staff to review this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have to go because we do have another meeting at 8:30.
That's okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
No. Thank you both, please.
And one last thing, we believe in no hungry home. And we have been pleading for the last 15 to 20 years here in the greater Los Angeles area, whether it is food, whether it is clothing, whether it's the spiritual counseling, hundreds of thousands of people have benefited so far. And we want to extend that. We serve the homeless, we serve in various parts of LA and other cities. And if that's something we can do here in the city, we'd love to do that here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for announcements?
Hi, it's been a while.
It's been a while, how are you?
Good, how are you?
We're good.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Beltran, I'm the Chief Development Officer for House of Root. We're located in Pomona. And I'll say, I have one of our board members with us, Tom Allison. I came to share an event with you, but I also wanted to just let you know that House of Root has been providing domestic violence services to LA County and San Bernardino County for 45 years, is our 45th anniversary this year. We serve your community, your citizens, and we would love to have all of you come out. We will be having, since it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, also in October, which hopefully you will provide a proclamation sometime in the future in October to us. We are having our candlelight vigil this Thursday on October 20th. And we've held at our Pomona location, which is at 599 North Main Street, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. And it's a way for us to recognize and remember those that have lost their lives due to domestic violence in our community. So your presence and participation at that event would be greatly appreciated. I know all of you are very busy, but I appreciate your time. For those of you that don't know, House of Root provides care to over 2,000 survivors of domestic violence, do their shelter, prevention services, and do their transitional care. And we just signed a contract, we're doing a very large housing program now in our area. So we really look forward to seeing you there. And was Thomas has anything else to add?
I was talking about someone else.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I do want to echo, great work that we're doing at House of Root. On November 5th, Saturday, Rotary International District 5300 is throwing its first diversity DEI conference ever. And it's happening right here in the city of Laverne, at the University of Laverne, November 5th, from 10 to 2. I think now, all times, right? Now's the time for us to celebrate each other, especially in light of the glory example we're giving from LA. So we hope that votarians will join us and we can engage in this important work together.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone other announcements? Sherri, no announcements?
No. Not this week.
I just have a couple. I stole these off of Lucre's desk, I have to give them back. We have the Laverne Police Department, it's the Pink Patch Project, which is for cancer. And they are, there's a fundraiser, this one is for the Support the Laverne Police Department from 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. at Flank Broiler on October 19th, Wednesday, October 19th this week. And that's for the Laverne Police Department. Then we have one, Tappus for Hope, which is the actual fundraiser for the Cancer Pink Patch Project for the City of Hope. And that is October 20th, 4 o'clock p.m. to 8 p.m. at Mi Rancito. So I want to make sure we support these, these are great causes. I know they had one at Red Devil, I think, a week or two ago. These will be posted on our website and make sure everybody sees them. I'll probably do a little social media deal on these. This is real important to support our group, so.
Does it land?
Yes, they have two weeks, right around. Any other announcements? We will move to consent calendar. City Manager Doug, did they have anything pulled from the consent calendar, sir? Then, any questions on the consent calendar, council? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion, approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Vote, please. Carries. Item 7, public comments or communications. If anyone has missed, Ms. Gallowdon, I think you have a card filled out for that?
I didn't, yes. Thank you again for the time. So I passed an email that I received and I have lots of things to say about the city and what matters in Laverne, but with an election coming up, I want to make this focus today for me. So in my opinion, macro politics and the influence thereof is not making our country safer, wealthier, friendlier. It's not just our country now, but our city, it's divided. And I ask everyone, what part of you play in the division that would have us betray our neighbors over politics? Over the last few years, politics has made our cities less safe and cries to defend the police, less wealthy when the cost of money has doubled a year. And how in everyday life are dollars buy measurably less at the pump and the grocery store? When I ran for city council, it was one of my primary points of difference that I had no allegiance or affiliations with anyone or any organization that would sway my decision to simply do what's best for Laverne. Unfortunately, our city has been poisoned by political animus and outside influences to the point that we are potentially on the verge of not recognizing our city in just a few short years. How appropriate tonight. Laverne needs to come together as one body of people and pay attention to what is going on. and who it is that our representatives are with their full resume and plain view. Tonight, I decided to come and speak because of a personal email sent to me by our mayor. In fact, upon reading it, it was not really a personal email. It was just another piece of junk email trying to tell me how I should vote. It was addressed to me using my formal first name, Manuel. And it was not sent by the mayor, yet it was signed by the mayor, addressed from the mayor. And it was just another mailchimp mass email campaign on behalf of Clermont candidate for our local water district. So apologies, Mr. Mayor, but since you are endorsing him formally and you sent that to me, apparently, per what it says, I think that puts you in the scrutiny of me being allowed to tell you my opinion about your endorsement and why I do not support your choice. Instead, urge all of the Laverne voters to do their own homework, to be informed voters, to not simply go by social media outreach that accesses tool for non-sanctioned city messaging and the residents of Laverne. And to ask our mayor yourself why he would support someone someone with only three years of residency in our state and who is in Clermont. To be transparent, I am not personal friends with Mr. Boeckock. I've never been to his home, nor I have any regular engagement with him. I only know that he served our state for over 20 years as the Public Works Director, sits on the David and Margaret Youth and Family Services Board, and that his daughter currently serves our state as city staff. My only real personal familiarity with him was when he came to listen to me in one of my meetings. That said, I owe nothing. I appreciate what he's done for our city in service and professional occupation that makes him an invaluable asset to sit on the water board in a time of water crisis and where political advocates have worked hard to infiltrate these boards for the power they would have in our everyday life. For over 20 years, he has worked for us, playing an important role in making the Three Valleys Water District one of the more well-managed agencies serving our community here in Laverne. Over that time, he served as president, now serves as the vice president. Additionally, he's lived in Laverne for several decades, which alone should be enough to question why anyone would look outside Laverne for Laverne. In conclusion, I want to urge all the voters of Laverne to look into the background and skill sets of these candidates and then apply whatever measure for your choice of your own investigation. Do not be swayed by mass email campaigns. Do not simply take somebody's word for it. This is your Laverne, and while our representatives come and go, we have to live here and deal with the outcomes of our choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anyone else? Just vote count.
As most of us in this room know, the fiasco of what happened with the district voting and the lack of notification to the residents. I am respectfully requesting that the city and the staff please do more than just utilize social media to notify them about the study session, the future study session for this housing planning element project, whatever it's going to be called. We need to invest in the residents themselves, and the lack of communication shows utter disrespect to that, especially to our large, mature community who may not utilize social media in any way, shape, or form. I know that the city has gone more towards that direction for social media with the upgrade of the website. But even sometimes our own city's website lacks the information for residents to be more informed. I would like to see maybe across the board with the police department and the fire department as they have Facebook pages and Instagram accounts and have information that is something of that magnitude be utilized across the board, not just for the city, but for all avenues of city services. And also, you know, we have signs telling us to conserve water. And you know, there's a snow day at Heritage Park or Pumpkin Patch or whatever. Why aren't we using these electronic tickers to notify people about the meeting for the study sessions or an important city council meeting? I think that is a tool that is not being managed very well. And I know we're in that interim timeframe of not having a permanent Public Works Director. But I don't think it's something that's out of anybody's understanding that can be done. So please, that's my request to the city for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boeckock. Gary.
Just a few things. Maybe we're talking about houses. Can somebody over here tell me, what are they building on B Street and Foothill? There's a big house. Has anybody looked at that? You can jump from one roof to the next in front of somebody's yard. I don't understand.
We'll check that out for you, sir.
As far as the Foothill Freeway and Chelsea Footbridge, the water state care completely from the park. The skis are still there. Bushes growing in there. And old windows here. Those bushes keep going. And those couch hands thing, the mosquitoes, it's a Laverne. So has anybody pushed forward since I've been here? Have you advised anybody? City manager?
The city manager's writing it down as we speak to make sure. He's got it.
Okay. Couple of meetings ago, you were talking about building up here some trails for the people that you wanted to know in Laverne. And you said all you could do is call the police and they'll run out of there. That didn't work too well with me and with people at my place. He says, we can ask them to leave, but we can't tell them to leave. Is that still same up there?
Overdue that for the city manager. I'll talk about that.
Next time?
Yeah. We'll wait till you. Yeah, is that it, Gary?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. If you take a seat. Once we're done with public comment, we'll comment on that. Gwen, you had your.
No, I don't really want to speak. But at the last meeting, there was something that came pretty close on the Brown Act. And people called me and wanted to know if you had, if there had been something committed wrong here. And I was confused, but I talked with the lead about it. And I didn't see anything wrong. You did not endorse here at the council what the person was asking or came very close. And you would help me out if you would maybe know where that, where the person is going and stop them. Or else we will have a violation of the Brown Act if you should violate. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
I do not.
The ID came up when I was talking about your comment. I don't do Facebook, so I don't know how you voted, how you endorsed. I don't really care about Facebook, okay? But it's getting more difficult with some of our residents here wanting to talk about what's going on now. And this city council has to stay partisan and out of that, the things that are going on. Or else you will be in violation of the Brown Act if you let them get you to get out, to endorse or whatever. So it's very hard to sit there and listen to some of the ways that they're going. And I would appreciate if you would maybe educate people and say, we are nonpartisan. At least you're supposed to be on this dais. All of you, as you know. And I hope that it will stay that way. We don't ever want to be like y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Come on up. Can you just state your name and your address?
Marlene Carney, 1632 Kent Drive. I actually wasn't going to say anything, but here I am. One thing I would like to suggest, and I've said it to a few of you, is I think the city might be ready to have some sort of series of community forums. Because with the lack of local newspapers, the fact that a lot of the residents don't get the information that you're sending out. Many are not on social media. Many people hate social media because it sometimes can be just a huge waste of time. I think it's time maybe to have some sort of visioning process where you bring the community together. You get various sectors, the educational sector, the senior citizens, residents, the business sector, everybody, together to talk about what they want this city to look like in the next five, 10, 20 years. A lot of cities have done that. I come from the Chamber of Commerce Industry. A lot of cities that I used to interact with did this. We have new council members. We have a new way. We have redistrict voting now. A lot of people don't even know you. If they weren't in your district, they may or may not know who you are and what you, what your feelings are about the community. I just think that's something that you need to look at and do because I think there's a lot of issues that are going, that are facing us, the housing element and many other issues as the goal line comes in. And I see it. I see comments. And I can tell this is going to divide the city if you don't come together, bring the community together, and start having these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Allison.
I mentioned it earlier. And actually, I think the points that were just made by the speaker, thank you for that. I've been calling for that for the last three meetings, the visioning session. But I think LA gives us a telling example of the climate that we have. And I know a lot of people are going to say, well, that doesn't happen here. Well, it does happen here. And we know that it happens here, right? The city needs Cassie. The city needs a place where everybody can come and be themselves. Cassie has been an open, convening space where everybody can come and play a part. And in fact, Cassie is a model that I think cities across this nation need, right? It's a big deal to have Nuri Martinez, the president of their city council, make the comments that she made while our mayor is a member of our Cassie program. There's a stark contrast there. And we get to say something special about Laverne because of what Cassie does and because of what Cassie is to so many of us. I sat out in the National Night Out at the table for Cassie. And we have people of all shapes, sizes, non-binary, colors, ages, come and embrace the mission of Cassie. Because Cassie is the place, the convenient place for where anybody who wants to see anything positive can join hands and work together to see that come to fruition. So I think it was pretty serious when the city council voted unanimously in 2020 to support Cassie. We're starting to see support congrats. I just urge the city to keep the path. This is a model that the nation needs. This is a model that the region needs. And there's room for difference. I was with Mr. Gallo until he got the vice himself, right? There's room for difference. There's room for difference. And not only is there room for difference, we are better because of our differences. And that is why I say we need Cassie as that convenient space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone else who should speak? Anybody on? I can hear that from here. Nothing, nothing, nothing. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring up the dais. Council comments. Councilmember Laug. By the way, it was her birthday on Saturday.
It was his son's birthday on Saturday.
It was my son's birthday, too, so.
So we know what my parents and.
And they're all 30. They're amazing, incredible.
Actually, it was a pretty good segue from the last comment because I wanted to give my kudos to both the Laverne Historical Society and to Cassie for putting on a Dia de los Muertos event at Hillcrest last Monday. It was attended by some Hillcrest members as well as some Cassie members, some, you know, folks from the public. And it was a really good educational opportunity for folks who might not know what Dia de los Muertos was. And I think it led to some good conversations about family and community. And so I think it was a really well-done event. So, Sherry, thank you to you and your team. Barbara, thanks to Hillcrest for helping host it. But it was, it was very, very lovely. So I strongly encourage when events like this come up from our groups in the city, take the opportunity to attend because there are some really good folks take the opportunity to attend because there are some really good folks doing really good things within our city limits. There's also an art gallery at, at Hillcrest, if you haven't all gone to see it. There are some really talented seniors in our community. If any of you know Leroy Lapp, his woodworking is hands down some of the most beautiful things I've ever seen. And some of those pieces are for sale. So if you are interested, I encourage you to go and visit and take a look. I also wanted to report that Active Transportation Committee met last week, and we've seen a little bit of an uptick in requests from residents or inquiries from residents about, you know, can a crosswalk go here? Can a, you know, intersection go there? And there are certain parameters that have to be followed to allow that. And so some of the discussions that happened at that meeting was about how can we better educate our residents about what can and can't be done? So please keep on the lookout for that. I'm happy to report back so that you can see what's happening, especially with the growth in the city. You know, I'm sure some of those requests will continue to come. So I wanted to make folks aware of that. This past weekend, you will be host of its homecoming, the first in-person in two years since the pandemic. I think for having been out of practice for a bit, and it was a pretty good showing. And I just wanted to highlight for those of you that may know him, Bob Dyer. He lives in Hillcrest, but he's a longtime resident of Laverne. And he retired from being the voice of Laverne on Saturday. So he, for the last 35 years, he has called every football and basketball game at the university. So just an amazing human being and just really a credit to our city. I also wanted to remind folks that there is a blood drive at the University of Laverne next Monday. So if any of you are interested, willing, and able, there's always a need for blood. You can sign up through the Red Blood, or through the Red Cross, or go down to the university and sign up as well. Quick and easy peasy, and you get snacks. So that's a driving factor for any of you, there, there are snacks. There are cookies and, you know, all sorts of things. There's also a Tri-City Mental Health meeting this Wednesday at 5:00. It's via Zoom, so if anyone's interested in attending, you can find the Zoom link on the Tri-City website. And just a little note, Councilmember Johnson and I met with some representatives from the Fairplex last week. And so they've been sharing some of the things that are going on. And I know that there's been some concerns raised from residents about, hey, what's going on over here? What's going on? You know, what are they going to do with a specific plan? And so we've really asked them to, you know, to continue to share information with us so that we can share it with all of you. There will be a meeting in November. They have not locked down the date and time as of yet, but once that does come about, we will make sure it gets posted on the city website so that folks are aware. And we'll ask that it be distributed via our social media platforms as well. And last but not least, vote, voting day is, election day is coming up, November 8th. So if you haven't received your ballots, you might want to check in and make sure that you've got it so that you can do all the things that you need to do to be engaged. So with that, I hope you all have a good week. I hope you all have good costumes for hollering in. I can't wait to see them. And kudos to all the folks that have decorated. There are some really cool houses out there, some really, really cool houses. So take a drive around. But have a good week and be kind.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. I have a go back to St. Andrew Duff. We had some questions in Gary that you wanted to answer. Sorry. We'll go back here.
Yes, I believe Gary was asking about how the dealing, how the city is dealing with some of the homeless issues. The, the city council and the staff are very concerned about the increase in presence of homeless, of folks experiencing homelessness in, in Laverne. The city council has allocated significant resources to this issue. We have three teams that are working in, in Laverne throughout the week to address issues raised by homelessness. There's the host team, which is formed by our police department. The city council allocated funds from the ARPA funds to pay police officers overtime to work on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And they're dedicated specifically to dealing with issues related to homelessness. So that team is out. There is also a team called the Lakota Team that I believe the funding comes from Measure H and, and San Yerba Valley CAU. They are in town on Thursdays. It's a team of three to four individuals that, that attempt to provide services to folks on the street. They have a number of resources that they bring to the community as well. We also have through Tri-City Mental Health Services, we have a navigator, what Tri-City calls a navigator, that works in the city Monday through Friday. And she also works with the Tri-City Crisis Response Team. Primarily addressing folks that are decompensating and experiencing mental events. And the crisis team can respond and, and assist those folks as well. Laverne also has dedicated beds at the Pomona Shelter. Shelter's called Hope for Home. And there are beds that are dedicated specifically for Laverne folks that need assistance. In addition, we are bringing to the council, hopefully on November 7th, but it may slide to the second meeting in November, what we feel is going to be an enhancement to our Laverne municipal code that will provide the police department with additional resources and tools that they can use to address issues raised by homelessness. So I hope that gives some type of response in terms of the commitment the city of Laverne has made to this issue.
Yeah, it still bothers me with officers show up, especially up near Laverne in the summertime, fire up in here. You can ask them to leave, but can't tell them to leave. Does that ever really change? Because that could be a big problem up there.
Well, I'm not sure about your specific situation, but we believe that this amendment to the Laverne municipal code will give some additional options for the police to address the issue that you're describing. That's our hope anyway.
I'm just worried if there's a law saying...
This is as close as you're going to come to a law, I think, so.
Wishful thinking.
Hopefully. I mean, hopefully it works for us.
Okay.
Thank you, St. Andrew. Mr. Crosby. Mayor Prokhorov, Tim Crosby.
You're fine, thank you. I had a pleasure to go to Foothill Terrace last week and talk to residents there. Speaking about Ms. Lau, Foothill Terrace resident came up and was asking me about the corner of Emerald and Bowdoin. I know that there, there's a new housing development in that area, so there should have been a study and on that, that street. But there is no way for residents to get from the east side of Emerald to the west side of Emerald, all the way up and down that, that street where we can go over by Gary's house to cross over to get to Laverne Heights as well. There's no way for students and, and/or parents to get them over there too, and our, our senior residents looking at that area too. So I, I know I brought that, bringing this up to Mr. Duff, just to make sure that we pull out the reports, look at them and/or the other areas that we, we have all been talking about too. Happy birthday, Ms. Councilmember Lau. And I'm glad that Laverne brought a win for your birthday. I was in, in the state over the weekend, but I heard it was even the clouds and the lightning for you for your birthday too. So. I know at the last meeting too, we had another resident that spoke about our flag and to be able to be seen over on that side. And I, I, today, that, that has not been, been done. And I want to make sure we look at either putting another flag over there so that our residents see the flag over on the far side, or somehow, I know switching wasn't an option, or moving it somewhere so that our residents over there can see that too. My next, on my, my, my visits is I'm, at the end of the month, I will be going to the Vintage Grove Senior Apartments and speaking to them as well. So trying to get out there and seeing different residents in the area and appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prokhorov Crosby. Councilwoman Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And despite all these amazing birthdays, happy birthday to everybody. Happy birthday to U.S. Navy, it was October 13th, may you don't know, originally established October 13, 1775. Birthday, United States Navy is dedicated to the camaraderie, the men and women who make up the most powerful navy in the world. So I want to first say that as well. Earlier this month, we had a, we had a fire up in our district up there in North Laverne, a resident fire. Then I went to go talk to the family and thank God they're safe. We can replace everything, but can never replace a life. And I wanted to thank the firemen that were there, through Fire Station 3 that responded immediately, effectively, and were able to put out that fire. So thank you very much, and I thank God for giving us the opportunity that nothing else happened in, um, that, that area. It's really close knit with everything. It couldn't possibly happen, didn't happen. So thank you very much for that. Next, well, I intended this last weekend, thank you also to our city staff for, and all those that were involved from Heritage Laverne out there early this morning. I was trying to get out there before you put men in with the mayor. I was trying to get one ahead of you. You're always good with that. By the way, I'm getting a selfie stick for Christmas. And a lot of my trip, one too, Mayor. You deserve nothing but the best, Mayor. A hundred percent, Mayor. I was out there, it was an awesome opportunity. I talked to some families there for a start. Thank you for the vendors that were there. I'm sorry for stealing any of your guys' thunder, but I'll just tell you what I did. No problem. You know, it was a great time. Good to see families, I love to see the kids. You know, if you didn't know, they, they, they got, they got some great things there. And I really appreciate everybody working hard, getting that together. Thank you for the city staff for making Trump Treat really amazing for our families. I brought a lot of kids there. I, I guess this year we didn't do the best dressed costume, maybe next year we will. Something to look forward to. The fire department did an amazing job and decorated that fire engine. That was awesome. Police department did a great job with, with that, with the blue dig, with the skeletons. And, you know, my personal favorite, the dress department, that, that was awesome. And thank you for the city staff for allowing me to pass out a lot of the candy. I passed out a lot of candy. So you came my lane, I passed it out. So thank you very much. I appreciate you. And from there, I went down to an amazing opportunity that we had, which is the Beer Walk. I know some people like wines, people like beer, I like everything. But you know what? It's a great time to see everybody there. It was a great time to see people just, just getting together, rain or shine. It was a beautiful opportunity to get the people together. And I miss that. I miss the community getting all together. It was just one day where we all got together. So thank you for that, and thank you for the opportunity. And later on, this, this, a couple of weeks, we'll be coming out, doing some recognition to our senior volunteer patrol, our amazing seniors who I see day in and day out, out there on patrol in our community with disability. And that's, that will segue to the next part is I look forward to bringing up to the council my Public Safety Committee that I wish to have here in the city. I'm a man of my word. And I promise you, I want to get that done. I know you, Ms. Marlene, you talked about, you know, the community forums. It's another opportunity for all community to get together. This is not just about police. This is about police, fire, public works, our community together to talk about some things that we can do better in our community. Can't be taking everybody else. Outside here, I just want to focus on my community here in Laverne, and I need you all. I do need, I can't do this by myself. So please get together, let's work hard, and keep Laverne safe and strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cash. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Cash. I'm looking at my notes.
I did. I got a picture of you there.
I'm dry over here, man.
I did take a little peek. Is it on camera?
I did want to thank staff for the Trump Treat program that was put on and also the Beer Walk. I mean, we had obviously some rain to deal with.
Little bit.
Little bit of rain, little bit of lightning.
Yeah.
But it was a very well-received event, I believe, and enjoyed by most everybody that was there. I do appreciate it. Let's see. I did send in a letter, a proposal for a ballot measure. I know Mr. Cress is taking a look at it to see if it is legal and at least to get it on the ballot for the residents to decide whether or not we go back to an elected mayor. And I know the timing is not going to be immediate, but at least wanted to say that we're still working on that, and it's not going to go away. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Well, you kind of all stole all our thunder here, so, I mean, what a great weekend, even though it rained. I mean, my, it was my son's 30th birthday, so we were up at the house about 10 o'clock, and all the kids were up. And we had the most amazing thunder and lightning storm we've had in years. And, I mean, the gods opened up. I mean, I haven't seen, our pool went up like this, just completely, probably an inch of rain in North Laverne. But it was beautiful. I'm sorry that some of the stuff got rained on. I know that the Trump Treat had a little issue because they were afraid of electrocution with our people with those E-Zs with the metal frames. So they took a break, and then the, the thunderstorm came in again. But again, Community Services Department, our police are fired, did a fantastic job. The Beer Walk wasn't able to attend because we were celebrating my son's 30th birthday, our last kid in the teens. Yeah. And so it was amazing. And also the Heritage, the Heritage Foundation did an amazing job. People, it was drizzling, but everybody had a great time. There was kids. The pumpkin patch is amazing up there and the animals they have. And the Heritage Foundation people are so cool, and they were doing their tractor rides. But I also want to thank everyone for coming. We do truly take all of your comments to heart, and we do appreciate. A lot of people really spend a lot of time on the information they have. Our staff is here, they're hearing everything. I do like the idea that, you know, as a community get together and have some meetings with us and just discuss things, current events. Gary, I hope your questions were semi-answered.
Yeah.
We'll talk to you after, but as, as our city manager Duff said, the homeless population is a difficult issue. But you must call. If you see a homeless person, you must call. The more we approach them, the more we give them the services, the more things that we have in our tool chest to be able to address those people, to get them help and service, and remove them from a dangerous situation is where we want to be. And we're working on that right now. And it's very important. Our governor needs to give us a care act so we can have guardianship of these people to get them off the streets and get into some kind of a mental situation or, or drug assistance. It's serious. I was on, it was CBS on Friday at 9:00, and there were four homeless people in that one center at Crunch Fitness around the area there. One was being arrested, two police cars. So you can only imagine the services that we have that are taxed to take care of that. And they have very few tools. But as we give some ordinances, some teeth, and hopefully the governor comes down, we can be able to take care of this. Because as far as I'm concerned, one homeless is too many. No, I did say that. If he comes down, I know he's done it in some other communities, but hopefully ours will be next, so. But I do want to thank everybody for coming. I appreciate all the information. And I do want to say, as Councilwoman Cash stated, without Fire Station Number 3 being open, that house may not have survived a fire. And they responded while other of our resources were at the hospital and in other places, that that Fire Station 3 being open is a gem, and it really does protect our residents. Whether it's north, south, east, or west, it's resources for everyone. But in that particular case, they got there, it was a garage fire, knocked it down with not as much damage as could have been if they would have had to wait and go from another station, one or two, or counting. So kudos to our chief and our fire department, our new deputy fire chief. And with that, our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, November 7th at 6:30 PM. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:50. Excuse me, let's back that up one. We're going to adjourn to Friday, October 21st, 2022, 4:00 PM for city manager interviews. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be number 7 at 6:30 PM, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:53 PM.